I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hey, all in favor?
Anybody got Trey Hill's number?
I'm sure Bubba would be able to give the presentation.
You're not the guy?
I do too.
The resolution's up.
Ah, okay, let's do that. Resolution, item 12A, resolution 2019-26, resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, mending and replacing resolution number 2019-09 with this resolution authorizing and approving 2018 community development block grant disaster recovery.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Are you coming up to talk about that? You did such a good job.
While he's up here, if you want to move up the fire and EMS contracts, we can.
There you go. Guide me to that one.
Item 11B and C.
Okay, under discussion and possible action, item 11B, discussion and possible action regarding authorizing the city manager to make amendments and execute a contract for fire and rescue services with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Item C, discussion and possible action regarding authorizing the city manager to make amendments and execute a contract for emergency medical services with the Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Okay. Let's see here.
City manager's report if you'd like.
Okay. Sure. Fire when ready. Gridley?
Yes, sir. We're vastly, or we're closely coming up on our annual National Night Out initiative. I say ours. Obviously, this is an initiative that takes place nationwide. This year's event will take place on Tuesday, October 1st, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity for citizens to partner with local law enforcement agencies to help curb crime within the community. We encourage folks to participate either at the HOA level or the neighborhood level by, at the very least, having your neighbors turn on their porch lights that evening to signify their commitment against crime in our community. You can also organize a block party or a neighborhood event, or if you'd like to have your very own police department, our very own police department attend your event, you can contact PD, in particular Officer Kevin Crouch at 281-482-9318, or at K Crouch, C-R-O-U-C-H, at friendswood.com. They will attend your block party and visit some with you and your neighbors.
I teamed up with Josh Rogers, Deputy Chief. We're going to hit a couple of those places. So, other council members, it's a great opportunity, partner up with somebody from PD or fire and hit a couple of them.
Yes.
It's a great way to get out in the community. They even had a nacho truck over there in Polly Ranch, so.
Nice.
You might want to sign up for that one.
And I believe you all aren't required to ride in the back of the squad car, but I could be wrong.
Wrong Scotty is.
Our Friendswood Library just completed their annual summer reading club. I will say that this year's summer reading program was a success. Our over 1,500 children and teens participated, reading over 15,000 hours and completed over 1,600 reading challenges. There were 4,179 prizes awarded throughout the summer, as well as some other interesting accolades. Of the 1,500 kids that participated, only 78 adults participated, completing 204 books and 46 challenges. We'd like to thank our sponsors that made the prizes an option. This was Sonic, Whataburger, Houston Astros, TCBY, Canes, Raising Canes, Bouncetown, and our Friends of the Library. Related to the library, I would like to mention there will be a gala, a first annual Friendswood Gala put on by the Friends of the Library this October 4th at the library. It's hosted by the Friends of the Library with tickets being sold at $100 per person, intended to raise funds to help improve the library and the various programming activities they put on. There will be a classical or jazz guitarist by the name of Brooks Williams there that evening to perform, and it should be a great event. I encourage folks to attend if they can. We're also coming up on our annual Chamber Business and Health Expo. This is the fourth year in a row that this event has been held. This year's event will be on Thursday, September 19th, from 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon to 7:00 p.m. in the evening at Friends, at the First Baptist Church on Heritage. This provides local businesses and other industry to partner or at least showcase their offerings with the public. It's intended to be both a business and a healthcare expo. This year's theme is one that focuses on healthcare providers. The Chamber is partnering with the various healthcare agencies that are in our local community. The theme is the pulse of the community. For more information, please contact the Chamber. Lastly, a Hurricane Harvey update, just to give a flavor of what staff has been working on over the last several weeks. We've attended stakeholder forum meetings with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, met with FEMA, had multiple meetings with the Clear Creek Waterside Steering Committee, as well as their technical advisory committee. We've met with the general land office and attended the various webinars on the upcoming mitigation dollars that are coming down the pike. I will note on the latter one, the feds have listened to us and they've reduced the threshold for this next round of funding from 70% low to moderate income to 50%. All the rules haven't been written yet. The state's working on a state action plan that they hope to have in place by February of 2020. We've met with both cities of League City and City of Pearland, Presoria County, the Durantage District, Flood Control District, and their engineers, as well as private property owners on the acquisition of large swaths of the, of Clear Creek right-of-way that we're looking to do the mitigation activity that's currently underway by the Galveston County Consolidated Durantage District. I know a lot of this is sight unseen. Obviously, unless you get closer to the creek, folks don't know what's going on, but you definitely see the dump trucks that are traveling our roadways. We have about any given day 40 to 50 dump trucks that make a total of 600 trips a day, hauling anywhere from 10 to 14 cubic yards of dirt out of the creek. It's impressive to see and definitely will help improve us and get us better prepared for a future storm. We've had multiple buyout applications that are pending, one with hazard mitigation grant program that we applied for in the summer of 2018. A few months ago, we received word that the grant's been awarded. Tonight, you have an item on your agenda to award an acquisition services contract. This includes appraisal services for the hazard mitigation program, so that's moving forward. We have our flood mitigation assistance program that's currently with FEMA for review and approval, as well as three pending applications with community development block grant program. This is the HUD program, the 70% LMI that we had talked about previously, still pending. Staff continues to meet as frequently as we can to get these items moving forward. And that's my city manager's report.
Do that. Mayor, council? You want to start, Steve?
I just want to emphasize what Mo said, that the library's having their first annual gala, and if you can, if you can attend that night, it's going to be a fun evening and a great, a great event for the library.
I just wanted to say, we actually had our fourth annual Labor Day ice cream social. Appreciate everybody coming and participating. We had close to 1,000 people again, so I think people in Friendswood do like Blue Bell Ice Cream. I'd also like to congratulate my fellow council member, Trish Hanks. She won Dancing with the Stars. It is based on her ability to raise money and also to dance. So I want to say congrats. Y'all raised over $20,000. That's huge. Congratulations.
You want to talk a little more about?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit more about it.
Tell us about Bay Area Alliance.
I'll tell you about Bay Area Alliance. This is the first year that Friendswood Schools will be involved in the Bay Area Alliance. Previously, for the last, I don't know, 15 years or so that they've been in existence, they've been in the Clear Creek Schools. They're a nonprofit. They build community partnerships to try to discourage the use of alcohol and underage drinking among our youth. So they, they have, they sponsor medication take backs. They have lots of educational programs, and we've always supported them, but we've never had them in our schools. And this year, we're the recipient of a grant, and they will be in Friendswood Schools. So I was basically dancing and raising money for all the children that we love and those that we need to love, to try to discourage the underage drinking, to try to support parents who might form agreements, not to look the other way as kids go to parties, or not to encourage them to learn how to drink by sponsoring parties, and also about all the dangers of just exposing their young bodies and minds that are not equipped to handle drugs and alcohol, and encourage them or educate them about all the repercussions. So it was a really good cause. It was actually a very fun evening. We worked for two months. Better be quiet down there. Worked for two months, learning dance, and I said, I thought I could dance, but I'm not really a dancer, as I found out. But it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun.
You are a dancer and a fundraiser. I'll just add on to, add on to something that Sally mentioned. The ice cream social is great, and I just want to point out to people, because more than one person said, "How much does the city spend on this ice cream social?" We spent zero. That money that supports the ice cream social that we have every Labor Day now comes from donors and sponsorships, and so I want to, again, applaud, like Sally mentioned, all those people that helped out, but especially the donors and sponsors that put up the money, the ice cream, and servers, and everybody else to make that thing come off. It's a great event. It's becoming very popular.
Well, I just want to say what a great job our budget team has done, and Mo, and explaining everything. I think, though, that we all really need to look at that budget. They're asking us to keep a flat tax or the same exact rate that we had for the 1819, and our appraisals have gone up quite a bit so. And I know that 1718, 1819, they asked us that the actual rate was going to go down, and they asked for effective tax rate because our appraisals had gone down because of the flooding and everything. So I think we really need to look at that budget, guys, and I just, I don't really feel comfortable about, again, staying with a tax rate that's going to increase the amount of funds that's going to be going in there just to do that. If we can stick with the effective tax rate, which is, I think, just a little bit less than, then I think that's something we need to look at. But that's my own personal opinion. I didn't feel good about raising people's taxes, even though we were bringing in the same amount of revenue. Everybody paid a little bit more. But I do thank Katina, and I do thank everybody in the budget office for the work that they're doing, and I think it's awesome. I appreciate it.
Right.
I just, I just want to add in that congratulate Katina and her team again. I think that's awesome that, to win that award again. As Trish said, it's, sometimes we take for granted we keep winning these awards over and over, but it gets harder and harder to win these awards each year when you keep setting the bar that high. So congratulations on winning again. A great team.
Thanks. All right, we'll be back at 7:00. Reconven, excuse me. Item 7, public hearing to receive comment from the public, both oral and written regarding item A, proposed fiscal year 2019, 2020 general operating budget for the City of Friendswood. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on the budget? Okay. Item B, public hearing for zone classification change request for a 4.2507 acre tract of land, some meadow subdivision, located at 2407 West Parkwood Avenue, Suite 108, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from community shopping center to community shopping center specific use permit to allow next use 8131 religious organizations.
Good evening. I just wanted to clarify that this is just for 1,425 square feet out of the shopping center. It's the Boca Raton Center, and it is for a religious organization. P&amp;Z did have their public hearing, and the vote was five to one. Five in favor, one opposed. We had one commissioner absent. Items discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission were that there's adequate parking in the shopping center, there's signage already existing, and they would be subject to the same regulations as everybody else. And then liquor licenses was another topic that they discussed. Any businesses in there right now would be grandfathered, but any new businesses might be limited because that would be a church. So new businesses might be limited, but they left it to the property owner, that the property owners agree into this zone change, so they're willing and aware of that.
Thanks, Aubrey. So would anyone like to speak in opposition to this zone change, zone classification change? Anyone like to speak in favor of it? This man.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, everyone. I am the Realtor that's representing the tenant, and we have a three-year lease on the space, and I'm here really to answer any questions you might have about the use, about the tenant, or about the shopping center. They've been made aware from the start what the use would be, what effect it would have on them, and they already have a restaurant, as Aubrey mentioned, that's in there that serves alcohol, and they won't be bothered by it. The remaining space, which is about, about 8,000 square feet on the other end of the shopping center, is being considered by CrossFit. So as of the time that we executed the lease, there were no entities that wanted to serve alcohol being considered, so they didn't think it would affect their financial bottom line.
Why are we doing the entire tract when only 1,425 square feet is being affected?
The specific use permit is one platted, applying to one platted lot, but only 1,400 square feet will have the specific use permit authorization on it. So if the church wanted to occupy another lease space, they would have to come back and adjust their specific use permit.
And in terms of the signage that P&amp;Z asked about, they're not going to have a sign on the monument. They're just going to have a sign on the door of their space. And if you're familiar with the center, the Tom Plaza, that space, 1,425, is actually kind of ambiguous. You really can't see it. It's in front of two wheelchair parking spaces. So it's going to be kind of quiet, actually. And they only anticipate, they only pray for about 10 minutes a day. It's not my grandmother's church. It's loud and boisterous and singing and dancing and running around. They pray for about 10 minutes a day, three times a day, and what I'm told, historically, they've had two or three people show up at each prayer meeting. The most that they have at one time is usually on a Friday evening, and that's usually about 20 people. And then it's really only about 30 minutes. Then, the remaining time, the space is going to be used for office. They train, they do entrepreneurship training, resume writing, tutoring children, and things.
Do you know how many feet it is from that prayer center to Marino's Restaurant or to Friends Pub?
Don't, but I have my computer back there. I probably could get on a Gis map and...
Aubrey, do you know? Is it more than 300 feet or?
There's probably at least three or four stores in between the end of the church's location and the beginning of the restaurant.
That whole shopping center's not 300 feet long, I don't think.
I've got, I've got a question on the, you might have answered on the liquor license. So if somebody in the future comes into that shopping center, would they not be able to serve liquor now? Would this, would this stop the sale of any further places coming in there that needed a liquor license?
If it's less than 300 feet from door to door, then yes.
So if they technically expand it into another place next door, if they got bigger, that they could start shrinking the possible tenants within that building or in that strip?
Any that would choose to serve alcohol.
Any, any new tenants, not existing ones?
The existing ones could stay.
And they're not going to expand, is my understanding. This is a three-year lease. They have two options to expand three years, but their intention is to buy a location in Friendswood to purchase so they can have a separate freestanding building. So I seriously doubt, we're not doing this again, not with me.
I just...
Going to do another special use permit.
Yeah, I just, I was making sure. I guess the landlord knew that with that stipulation that if some other space were to open up within their shopping center, they might not be able to lease that out to a restaurant.
So I'm licensed by the State of Texas, and I'm bound by ethics by the Texas Real Estate Commission, so I fully disclose everything to all parties.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor?
And to answer Councilmember Hanks's question, the entire shopping center in its totality is about 500 linear feet. So from door to door, it's likely you're going to be less than 300 feet where that lease space is located.
So there's 4.2507 acres, there's 8,000 square feet beside this property, and then on the other side of the property, how, how, how much is there?
Thousand?
Okay. Okay, item 11, discussion and possible action, discussion and possible action regarding action on the proposed ad valorem tax rate for 2019 fiscal year, October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, to place a proposal to adopt a rate on the October 7, 2019 City Council agenda, and to schedule any required public hearings. We get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A motion is second. On the table is the flat tax rate, .5324.
This is a motion just to bring it, just to bring a public hearing, right?
By, by adoption of this motion, you're recommending a tax rate. Ultimately, you're going to have to have a public hearing, and the actual vote on the tax rate itself will take place on October 7.
But the direction that we're heading right now, based on our workshops and all the talk that we've done, is staying with the same tax rate that we had this year, which is 53 and 1/4 cents.
And that's what's going to be published before we have this meeting, right?
Correct. And the adoption of anything but the effective tax rate requires those public hearings.
Go ahead, Robert.
Mo, before you get to the workshop, could you give us, it doesn't have to be this evening, what the effect, the actual effective tax rate is, and how much, I know we're in between 2% and 3%, or 1% and 2%, could you give us a little more color on that so that we know exactly what we're looking at in terms of an effective tax rate versus staying with the same tax rate that we have?
Sure, and Katina's got the exact figures. The effective tax rate, if I remember correctly, was calculated around 50 cents.
Little over 50 cents. Probably 50.86 cents.
Almost 51 cents. New construction totaled about $453,000 in the budget, so the delta was the increased valuations, both Harris and Galveston County. We saw growth in values in Galveston County of about 4% and about 5% in Harris County from last year's tax rolls. The overall budget growth, though, was a little over 2% in, in revenue.
So we had a little over $400,000 in growth?
Based off new construction.
Based off new construction. And Katina, how much did we have based off of appraised values going up?
A little over $800,000.
$800,000. So this is like $1.2 million, and then if we stay at the .53, we're, we're growing our budget from, say, $58 million to $79 million. Wasn't that right?
Well, actually, the, the growth in the budget, the difference in the budget is the, is our estimated use of, or our projected use of capital, working capital in several funds.
From, from new construction and, and appraised.
No, the, the 20 million is related to capital projects.
So last year's budget, total budget was about $58 million. The reason it went up to $79 million is there's $20 million in revenue bonds that were issued in December of 2018 for water and sewer projects. So that's the growth in last year's total budget from 58 to 79. We are using fund balance quite a bit to fund a number of items. It's not being funded by the, the effective tax rate solely to make this budget work.
Well, my concern is, is, is last year, we sat here and struggled with the fact that some of our valuations had gone down, and a lot of our taxing, we had frozen, and now all those are coming back online, and we hit our residents of Friendswood with, I think it was 1.8% tax increase. Whatever it was, it was over what our flat tax was. So if we'd stayed at flat tax, it would have been 51 and change. Instead, we went with effective tax rate to meet the same revenues, and it turned out being 53 cents, okay? Now, the, just the opposite is happening. So now, just the opposite happened. Our revenues are up, our appraisals are up, our construction is up, and you're saying, hey, don't go the effective tax rate, keep it at 53 so we can have this money. I think, I think that we really need to think about that. I, I don't feel comfortable with that. I'd rather do the effective tax rate because I'm staying consistent with what I told the voters that I would do, and, and that was not raise their taxes. So if we do this, it's two years in a row that we've raised revenue, even though we're keeping the tax rate exactly the same. I understand that. But we're raising revenue, and we're raising off the back of our ad valorem taxes on people whose property taxes went up, like mine did, and like a lot of people I knows did. So I just think that we really need to be careful on how much we can tap our citizens, because come in November, when we're looking at anywhere from 5 to 10 cents on a bond issue from all sorts of sources and things that we want to do, are we starting at 53? Are we starting at 50? It's a, it's a big difference. And a lot of people are going to go, oh, my gosh, I just read in the budget for 2020 that we're planning on raising our, our, our water rates again. What is it, 13.5% for a single residential? Just off the top of my head, 17% for, no, up to 20 something percent for commercial?
Depending on, on their consumption pattern.
Depending on their consumption. That, that, I just read that, and, and we just raised their rates.
And I can, and I'll do my best to answer all the questions that are raised. Last year, we adopted the effective tax rate, which was lower than the flat tax rate at the direction of council, to, to reduce the impact on the taxpayers and bring in roughly the same revenue that we had in the prior fiscal year.
And I'll mention, I did vote for that.
Yes, sir. Based upon a number of initiatives that were undertaken this year, some planned and some that were planned mid-year, one of which being the creation of a new engineering department to address the recommendations of our drainage subcommittee and address the needs for the bond tackling that we're about to undertake, the largest bond election in this city's history, as well as a growth in our public safety sector. Last year's fire and EMS budget was about 1.8 million. This year's is going to be about 2.5 million, not because we've had uncharted growth, but we are working slowly to full-time EMS and staffing. We have grown our, our billing, but there have been growth in the budgets in various sectors that, that has applied the pressure necessary to have a flat tax rate as opposed to a flat, effective tax rate.
And I just, Mo, as far as EMS is concerned, I just read in the, in the budget book back there, that we did not propose 2020 any revenue for EMS. That line is empty. In 2018, we had $405,000. Now, this year, we didn't propose any revenue dollars in there.
We actually did. We just, we, we netted it against the expenditure. So our expenditures are less, because that revenue is actually going to go directly to FVFD. When we budgeted last year, or this year, we, we thought at the time that we developed the budget that the revenue would be remitted directly to the city, and it's not.
Oh, so we went ahead and zeroed out the revenue in that line? And if we'd have maybe kept that, but rates at the same rates as before, we'd be having consumption up enough to cover those rates. I don't know, it's a conservative thought or theory, but I'm, I'm just real concerned on what we're doing, because here, we're hitting them again on the water rates, we're hitting them again with raising more revenue, even though our, our, our values are going up on our appraisals, our ad valorem taxes are going up. If you'll have noticed, when the certified guy that comes in here and collects our taxes in twen, this last one is the highest one I've ever seen, from twen, from twenty, from nineteen ninety-eight to twenty-seventeen, this last one, we've got forty-two thousand some odd uncollected. Did y'all see that chart? This last one was the most uncollected, and we raised taxes on everybody. So, there are people out there having trouble paying their taxes, and I just think we need to think about that.
Our collection rate this last year was ninety...
Ninety-nine percent. It's around ninety-nine percent. Yes, ma'am.
And we ultimately do collect that money, and to Councilman Graffon's point, if you think we should have a lower tax rate, there's a whole list of items, just start cutting the list. You, that's all we have to do, we cut that list, that'll bring that number down.
Right. You have a discussion? Okay, got a motion in a second? Did you want a second? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. We need to repeat those public hearing dates.
Yes, sir. On Monday, September 23, at 7:00 PM, there will be a special council meeting to have a public hearing on the tax rate, and that public hearing will be repeated again on Monday, September 30. So, we'll have three consecutive Monday nights that we'll have the pleasure of meeting. Hopefully, those prior two ones will be relatively short.
All right. Item D, discussion of possible action regarding authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the city of League City to complete a flood mitigation plan for Lower Clear Creek and Dickinson Bay.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Mayor and council, you've heard a lot of communication this evening in regard to this proposed interlocal agreement. First off, let me say that this is a voluntary interlocal agreement. It in no way, shape, or form precludes the city of Friendswood, nor the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District from undertaking any activity that's currently underway right now along Clear Creek. The purpose of this agreement is to continue our efforts that were identified by the Drainage Subcommittee, as well as the Citizens Advisory Committee, to tackle drainage improvements along Clear Creek in the city of Friendswood. The Citizens Drainage Subcommittee, and I say Citizens, we had a number of other agencies involved in that Subcommittee effort, recommended commissioning a study by Rice University to tackle or give us some conceptual ideas of what we want to do to the creek, or what we can do to the creek to improve flood mitigation in the city of Friendswood. It was not an engineering study that we can start turning dirt out in Clear Creek. It wasn't sufficient that we can go get a partnership tomorrow with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It was helpful in getting a, a quick answer to a question that desperately needed to be had in order to have a bond election, to identify what type of projects we can conceivably pursue in order to effect flood mitigation within the city of Friendswood. League City has partnered not only with the city of Friendswood, but other agencies to include the Harris County Flood Control District, Galveston County, Bressoria County, city of Pearland, and a number of other agencies, as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, to do an engineering study of Clear Creek to the tune of one point five million dollars. Friendswood, if we want to do it on our own, can pay the same one point five million, but by partnership, we're able to achieve the, the same results at the cost of forty thousand dollars to our community, based upon our watershed makeup. The benefit of this study is we have a partner with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers from day one. We're working to meet their metrics from day one to parlay that forty-one million in drainage bonds to the tune of a hundred and fifty to two hundred million. Without federal partnerships, none of those projects that we hope to achieve along Clear Creek will ever take place. Forty-one million won't even get the first phase done, wherever we decide that first phase needs to be. I am in agreement with the number of statements that were made this evening. The Drainage District is doing a spectacular job along Clear Creek, and we want to continue that effort. Their work that's underway right now was a result of work that was done by Harris County Flood Control District and Galveston County to dig Mud Gully, the South Belt Detention Pond. They received the detention credits necessary to do the work that they're excavating right now. So, the comment that was made that they only spent ten thousand dollars for that engineering study, well, that was the tail end of several million dollars worth of work that was done previously, that they were able to achieve that, that, that partnership and that activity. This is a voluntary agreement. Nothing in this agreement precludes us from continuing the work that the Drainage District is doing. We continue to push that rock uphill, because we need to desperately find partners to help us throughout this process. I do recommend moving forward with this partnership. Even if the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers were not involved, we're not going to get state and federal funds if we don't have the buy-in from our neighbors, both upstream and downstream of Friendswood.
Okay. Any comment? Steve?
Yeah, I wanted to say, I was, I was really pleased, because there was a lot of talk about how we get partners and all this, and people that wanted to push our portion of the bond up higher, and right off the bat, we're seeing a whole bunch of agencies in different cities who all want to cooperate together, and so I think that's a, you know, that's a terrific move. I like that. I do, I do have a question about the, the sort of governance of this project seemed a little unclear. I do recognize that it's to pay for an engineering study, and in the end, everybody gets that engineering study, but if there's decisions to be made along the way on the direction and stuff, I wasn't, I, I read the parts that said, we, you know, we get to go and hear reports, which is great. I didn't see much on, you know, if there, if there has to be a decision, who makes it, and it appears to be primarily League City. They're paying most of the money, I got that, so, but if you could maybe comment on that.
Sure. The, the proposed engineering effort is not going to identify a project to the benefit of one party, or to the exclusion of another, and what I mean by that is the Freezing Nichols and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are looking at the entire watershed and identifying projects that benefit the entire watershed, albeit wherever those improvements are located, will determine who's paying for what moving forward. So, if the study says that, you know, League City needs to do the lion's share of the improvements to effect change along Clear Creek, the city of Friendswood cannot and will not be spending a dime of our taxpayer dollars to effect that change in League City. We're prohibited by law to do so. So, it's not a situation where there will be a decision point as to which city's going to benefit from what project. The efforts of the engineering study are going to identify where all the improvements can be located, and also give us a benefit-cost metric that shows whether or not we can meet federal criteria if we undertake those projects. And that's the benefit of having the Corps as a partner from day one, is we can continue to shape this, this improvement based upon the criteria that not the city of Friendswood, not the Drainage District, not the state of Texas sets. These are federal criteria, whether we like it or not. We have to play by these rules in order to get the, the dollars we're seeking to effect change.
Okay. Anybody else? Robert?
I, I think that the last thing that you said, Mo, was the most important thing. We have got to have a cost-benefit analysis to show the federal government that what we're doing is a cost-benefit. If we don't, we're not going to get a lot of help that we need. And with all due respect to the Rice study, there wasn't a cost-benefit analysis of that, but it was a very good study, and I agree that it was a very good study. But if you want the federal government, you've got to have the Corps sign off on a cost-benefit analysis. And we just laser focus on what we can in Friendswood, we'll scope what we have to scope in Friendswood, and then that work will get done. It, it, it's just, it's just what you have to do, you have to scope it, and then laser focus on your part, and, and it's going to cost us a little money to get that, and I, I'm, I'm going to support you on this, Mo.
Anybody else? All in favor? All right. Item E, discussion of possible action regarding disposition of RFP number 2019-04, Acquisition and Project Management Services to advise and assist with evaluating, planning, management, and execution of various property acquisition programs. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? This is Jeff Ward again, to help us with the appraisals.
Correct, and we had to rebid these services. I made a comment in the last item regarding federal regulations. While the state of Texas prohibits the acquisition of professional services based off a price, that includes appraisal services, engineering services, so on and so forth. The federal government wants the price to be some component of the, of the selection process. We took the step that we met the most owner, owner's challenge a year ago, and selected based off of qualifications. The feds awarded us the grant for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, but asked us to rebid this effort. So, we rebid this effort, and low and behold, Jeff Warden Associates is the, by far, the most cost-effective, two hundred thousand dollars cheaper than the other proposal we received, as well as the most qualified, doing several thousands acquisitions in, based on federal criteria. So, this doesn't change anything as to what we're proposing, it simply required us to do one additional step and re-procur these services. Sorry, Brian.
Yeah, good job, Brian. Okay. All in favor? All right. Ordinances. A, ordinance number T, 2019-32, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for 402 East Edgewood Drive, being a point three-eight-five-seven acre tract of land, lot 21 of the Hoydale and Kaufman subdivisions of the northeast part of the Perry and Austin League. Abstract number two, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, by granting an amendment to ordinance 2015-26, by adding NAICS use eighty-one-twenty-one personal care services.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Catch my breath. Ordinance B. Ordinance number T, 2019-31, second and final reading of an ordinance changing the prior zoning classification of a tract of land consisting of point nine-eight-one acres, also known as lots one, two, and three in Winding Hollow subdivision, providing for an amendment to planned unit development, 2016-01, to consider a new site plan and building elevations for a building to be constructed on the lot located at 107 Shadwell Lane.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? C, ordinance number T, 2019-32, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix D, the schedule of fees for building permits as a result of House Bill 852.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Ordinance number T, 2019-35, first reading of an ordinance rezoning one point four-two-five, I'm sorry, one thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet, described as Suite 108, within a tract of land consisting of four point two-five-oh-seven acres, located at 2407 West Barkwood Avenue, Suite 108, also known as Reserve A, in the final plat of Sun Meadows Professional, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, as more fully described herein, from community shopping center, to community shopping center special use permit to allow NAICS use eighty-one-thirty-one religious organizations.
I make a motion to table this item until I can have a better opportunity to see exactly what this is about.
I second that.
Okay. Got a motion to table. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we'll table it. Ordinance number T, 2019-36, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment 11 to the original general budget of the city of, for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? All right, we're adjourned.